Do you need a minute?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Alrighty, it seems like everybody is here now and it is now 7:30. Hope everybody can hear me okay. I would like to call to order tonight's special meeting. This is a special meeting because the date changed for Tuesday, November 10th. Board of Education, could I have a roll call please? Ruth, there we go, Ruth Ann.
Yeah, it kind of disappeared there somehow. Sorry. Member Carter.
Here.
Member Demmett.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Exum.
Here.
And President Hall.
Here, we are all here.
On the computer.
And it looks like we're ready to go. We're recording from Jason. Thanks for taking over, Jason, now that Austin's not with us anymore sadly. I don't believe we have any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda. So, and citizen statements, we have none, which is a first for a long time. So I'd like to take a call for an executive session for tonight after tonight's current meeting, which will be for the purpose of the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. With that said, I think we need an approval for tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Demmett.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Pulaski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
And President Hall.
Yes, agenda is approved. We do have one set of commendations and recognitions that I'd like to send to Jennifer. Did you want to take care of that or Angie taking care of that?
I'm taking care of that.
Okay.
It's on your printer. Now, can you bring me my other computer then? Sorry, Lori's. So, um, we're looking for the list of names here, but we've got it. So as you know, tomorrow is Veterans Day. And we are going to miss acknowledging all of our veterans in person at the many assemblies and celebrations ever since we returned to Veterans Day being a school, a student attendance day. But we are going to go ahead and recognize those folks tonight. Veterans Day is an opportunity to thank our citizens, our neighbors, our friends and family who have served in the military, both in wartime and in peacetime. So today, we enjoy freedom due to the hard work and sacrifice of these Americans. So before we do that, I would like to take a moment and have a moment of silence to recognize their service, past and present. Thank you for that. Again, I'd like to encourage all of you to thank a veteran tomorrow. Send a thank you card, fly a flag to thank them for their service. All of our schools will be honoring our veterans tomorrow in some way. Again, we will miss honoring them in person, but we will be honoring them through our announcements, special messages, and our learning activities that the students will be sharing in their classrooms. So I would like to recognize our USD 116 staff who have submitted their names and we're going to take a minute to say their names out loud, those who have provided the branch of service that they've participated in. And we will also be sharing a special surprise to our veterans that we'll be sending to the school on behalf of the school district, again, to thank them for their service. So first, we have Elizabeth Chan from King School. She is, her service within the Army. From Urbana Middle School, Patricia McCall, US Army Women's Army Corps. She served from 1973 to 1976. Honorably discharged with the rank of SP5 and received an Army Commendation Medal for her work in NATO. Priscilla Kraut from Urbana Middle School, served in the Navy. Steve Ryder, United States Marine Corps from Lille. The 10th in the Marine Corps Birthday, 245 years. And I'm not quite sure what he wanted us to say about that. But thank you, Steve Ryder. Janice Mitchell, Captain, US Army Reserves. Our UMS District Parent Liaison and Community Liaison, US Army Reserves. 10 years of service, including four years as company commander prior to receiving an honorable discharge. Christine Smith, US Navy, Thomas Kane. Jerry Moreland, Urbana High School. 10 years, US Air Force Active Duty and 10 years, US Air Force Reserve. Patrick Russell, Army Urbana Middle School. Dan Lance, Navy Urbana High School. And Nathan Watson, STS3 SSDV Watson, US Navy from Urbana High School. He wanted us to know that he was a sonar technician, worked with submarines, petty officer third class, and scuba diver. Colonel Scott McBride, UHS, US Army. He retired as Colonel Michael Scott McBride after 27 years of service. So he currently teaches at the high school. Diana Jackson, who we just celebrated her retirement. However, she is still a USD employee for a few more weeks. And she just retired and she will be retiring officially December 2020, US Air Force. And then Robert Swancheck, Dr. Preston L. Williams Elementary, US Army Reserves. 12 years reserves and four years Army. So again, we want to thank and recognize all of our veterans and we'll be sending you a special surprise on behalf of the district. They'll be on the lookout for that. So thank you again. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, and thank you to all of our service members. Okay, we're moving on to administrative reports and we have one tonight for the winter sports guidance discussion. I'll give it back to you again, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you. So part of this presentation, again, I know we have a lot of people in the community who are watching and interested in this. So board members bear with me. I know a lot of this you've read already, but I do want to make sure I say some of these things publicly because I know we have a lot of anxious parents and students watching tonight wanting to hear more about this conversation. So as you know, we have been practicing and participating in, not officially practicing, but we've been participating in the fall contact days. I'm going to share, I'm attempting to use two devices here, so we'll see what happens. Okay, well, I guess I won't share. So we have been participating and following the IHSA guidelines for fall contact days, which ended October 31st. And we've been kind of in this dead period the last couple of weeks since the Illinois Department of Public Health has classified basketball, boys and girls, as a high-risk sport. Other high-risk sports or winter sports, as we've discussed here, and it was in my superintendent update, wrestling was also classified as high-risk and it was moved to the spring. And cheerleading will not participate because of the requirements for high-risk. So there will be no cheerleading. And then we will be moving forward with boys swim and dunk. So at this point, we need to make a decision about what we would like to do with boys and girls basketball. So board members have been provided with a brief from our attorney and that wasn't shared with the public because it was a confidential document. However, I do want to walk through a few of the things that I've discussed with our attorneys that I've shared with our board members. So based on a guidance from our attorneys, they are recommending that, well, I'll just read a few of the statements. So failing to follow the state of Illinois' winter sports guidance and moving forward with playing basketball this winter will increase the school district's exposure to legal liability and jeopardize the school district's ability to defend itself in any litigation resulting from the same. So if we were to move forward with boys and/or girls basketball, we would be opening ourselves up to significant liability if we were to go against the recommendation of the Illinois Department of Public Health. One of the reasons why that would happen is we would lose our tort immunity as a district, which anytime that we would veer off away from state guidance, we're opening ourselves up to legal liabilities and we lose our protections as a school board and as a school district. Another factor that we need to take into consideration is our insurance liabilities. So I've talked to our insurance providers and many insurance companies do not provide coverage for communicable diseases. And I have spoken with our providers and we do not have coverage for a communicable disease coverage. We did, they did share with us some of, I think my mask is upside down. So I'm struggling with it. There we go. They did share with us the bacterial exclusions and unfortunately COVID is not considered coverable as a communicable disease under our current coverage. So this would be a significant impact to us as a district were we to move forward with basketball and girls' basketball. And it would significantly diminish our ability to defend ourselves where we, were there some issues related to the sport, whether it might be from playing or students or people who just attend the games to watch. We'd have to set guidelines around all of those things if we were to decide to play. Our attorneys did say that should you decide tonight, when we talk about this in future action, should you decide this evening to move forward, there are several waivers that we would need to have our students sign to decrease some of our liabilities related to going against the IDPH guidance. Another thing that I really wanted to share is I wanted to kind of talk about what high-risk sport, what that means. So moving forward, the season is supposed to start November 16th. I know IHSA, the Illinois High School Association, has had multiple meetings. They have a meeting scheduled again tomorrow. Our athletic director, Mr. Waller from the high school, has had several conversations with other athletic directors, with the board, the IHSA board. And so right now, the high-risk sport, the requirements are teens in high-risk sports can have no contact practices and trainings. Teens in high-risk sports are not allowed to have intrasquad scrimmages. Right now, boys and girls currently wear masks and that has been something that they have done all summer, all fall. They wear masks all times as do the adults. The students would be allowed to move forward with individual skill work, but no contact. And they would be allowed to continue weightlifting and conditioning. So as I mentioned before, Mr. Waller has been following this closely. I have been following what other school districts are doing. And right now, in the Big 12, even if we were to move forward and decide to play, we would have very few teams to play. So right now, Peoria has made a decision and they were one of the first in the Big 12 to actually make the decision not to play this fall or this winter, sorry. And there are several other districts that are leaning in the direction of not playing as well. So I don't want to name them all, but most of the other Big 12 districts, I think, are leaning toward not going against the IDPH guidelines. So at this point, you know, I would like, and I know you guys will have this discussion and talk about this when we vote, but the administrative recommendation would be that we would follow the IDPH guidelines for basketball, now classified as a high-risk sport. And we will participate in whatever activities high-risk sports are allowed to participate in, which would be open gym-like. The students would still be able to come. We want them to still be active. We want them to still have that outlet of being able to continue in condition. But they would not be able to scrimmage and there would be no contact. And again, as an administration, and we'll let the board decide, but we would hope that IHSA will take into consideration what this means for our youth who are seniors and are looking for, who need the senior season as an opportunity to get to some level of college play, whatever level that might be, and actually move the season to the spring in order to give the students an opportunity to still play. So our recommendation is we follow whatever IDPH basically tells us to do and that we don't go against that. Questions, discussion?
Any board members? Oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's, I know how devastating this type of decision is going to be to people. To people who have been working hopefully through basketball as a means to enable either the boy or the girl to achieve their collegiate dreams, their academic dreams. And so that, it's truly unfortunate, but I don't think we've got a choice. I think, I think I will concur with the administrative recommendation when it's time to do so. I just want to express how difficult this is for some of our student athletes.
In agreement with our administrators.
Yeah, I agree with the recommendation as well. I think, I mean, in addition to the liability risks that you outlined, Jennifer, I mean, I think it's just foolhardy for us to decide we would follow some guidance from the state and public health and not others. I mean, I think there's a reason that the NBA went to such great lengths to protect their players because they knew what a risk it would be otherwise. I mean, those were lengths that nobody could afford to do unless you were the NBA. And we care about our kids as much as the NBA cares about its players. So I certainly support the administrative recommendation.
I agree with Peggy. It's unfortunate situation for especially our seniors who, you know, have worked for several years to, you know, like John said, get to the point of potentially getting scholarships for college. But the risk of liability is just not worth it for the district to put ourselves in a situation where, you know, we're open to significant liability and also putting our kids and their families at a risk when we're not even doing, we don't even have school open right now. So to make the decision to do a sport that is a high-contact sport at a time where we've seen the most increase in cases since this COVID-19 started, I think would be reckless for us as a district. So I will be voting in support of the district recommendation, admin recommendation as well, with regrets, but you know, again, it's the situation that we're in.
And I know Paula and Ruth Ann still need to weigh in, but I did want to say another consequence or concern is we don't actually know what penalties the state or ISB might impose upon the district were we to go against their guidance. They haven't quite said that yet, but I can't believe if there are districts that go against that, that there wouldn't be some repercussions in some way from the state. We don't know what those would be at this time, but that's just something else I wanted to kind of put out there.
I agree with that as well. I was going to ask, thanks for reading my mind ahead of time there. I'm going to have to agree with the administration on this report. The reasons everybody else has mentioned.
Yeah, I'm in agreement too. This pandemic has forced awful decisions on, you know, everybody and this board and this is one of them. You know, we can't have, we can't have kids singing together. We can't have kids on stage together. This is another one of those things that we just can't, we can't do because it's not safe.
Well, and it's hard for me to even make this recommendation. I have, I have, you know, my son plays and he's a junior and he's been looking forward to his opportunity to play varsity for a really long time. So I think this is, you know, it is, hopefully it won't be completely devastating and we're able to get a season in the spring. So I know there have been a lot of discussions about football and what that means for a lot of the football players and those young people are looking forward to it. So we're hoping football, soccer, I mean, we have several volleyball, you know, young people who are looking forward to those activities happening in the spring. So this will be added to that group unfortunately, but.
And the worst thing that could happen is, you know, somebody is going to lose their season, but far better to lose a season than to lose a life.
Absolutely.
And so this, to me, is a no-brainer situation.
Well, I think I'm the only one who hasn't weighed in, but everybody said exactly what I was thinking and I would, I'll take whatever flack comes our way for this vote. If it means keeping people safe, it's unpopular, but it's the safest options. So I'll be voting for the administration recommendation too. Thank you for explaining it all and I'm glad that our attorneys were able to tell it so thoroughly for us. So, okay, we'll be voting on that in just a minute. We still have to get through our policy review first, which is the Press Plus 105. We have a few things outlined that need to be updated. So again, I'll let you guys take over that.
Okay, and I'm going to, I will still do a walkthrough of some of the policies, but I wanted Angie to give a little more of a, more of a presentation here at the beginning. I know this information was shared with the board yesterday to just bring you up to date on why we've had to make so many significant changes, based on legislation. So Angie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, now that I can talk. So Jennifer, do you want me to share my screen so that the public can see what I gave the board?
Well, I was trying to share it from this computer, but if you could do that, that'd be better.
I can do that, yeah. All right. So Title IX, there are new regulations for Title IX and I just wanted to kind of do, you know, just some basic information because I don't want to presume that anyone knows what Title IX is. And Title IX prohibits sex-based discrimination, including sexual harassment in educational programs and activities receiving federal financial assistance. And so this means sexual harassment with adults or with students. So this could be staff on staff, staff on student, or student on student. And so the types of Title IX sexual harassment includes quid pro quo harassment by a district employee. And quid pro quo means, for example, somebody might kind of offer like a position advancement for some sort of sexual harassment or might offer to buy you something. So there's some sort of either tangible thing or a promotion or something involved. That's what quid pro quo means. Number two, an unwelcome conduct that a reasonable person would find so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it denies a person equal educational access. And again, the unwelcome conduct means more of what the victim is feeling. And then, and the third one is any instance of sexual assault, dating violence, or domestic violence or stalking. So these new regulations.
Angie, can you?
Yeah.
Can you make your screen larger?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, I was just getting ready to say, do you need to make my screen larger? Is that better?
Yeah, maybe, maybe a little larger even more.
Sure. Better?
Okay, perfect, yes.
Okay. So I just went over the definition of Title IX and then talked about the types of harassment that it includes. And so I just kind of reviewed the top two things. For the sake of time, I won't repeat myself since it's right here. So the new, we've always obeyed Title IX. It's just that now there's a little bit more paperwork involved to outline how we're following the regulations, which is, which is great, which is just fine. So our new regulations require that there are revisions to our policies and procedures district-wide. We have staffing determinations. We need to publish the information and training materials on the district's website, which was done back in September. There's training for all personnel involved in a school district's investigation and grieving process, including the Title IX Coordinator, the investigators, the decision-makers, the appellate decision-makers, and the informal resolution facilitators. And so you might be wondering what all of these things mean. And so I have the privilege and pleasure to serve as the Title IX Coordinator. And so what that means is, is that I'm just kind of the organization person and when somebody has a complaint, whether or not it's a student or adult, they come to me. I'm also known as a complaint manager and also known as a non-discrimination coordinator for the district. And so something of this nature, somebody would come to me. I would ask if they would want to make a formal complaint. Sometimes things are a really big deal. Sometimes things might be not a big deal. And so sometimes we can kind of come up with an informal resolution. And you have some examples from Robinson Swartz that kind of outline that. So on September 25th, all of our administrators, and we actually had our guidance counselors and our social workers who wanted to be trained, were trained by Frank Garrett and Susan Nicholas through Robinson Swartz because they might be our, well, our administrators, we definitely required to be trained. But our counselors and our social workers, a lot of times students go to them first to report any instances of maybe sexual harassment. And so we wanted them to be, have the option to be trained as well. And so we were trained on September 25th to be a part of, you know, this Title IX team. And so Marquesha Parker and I, she's the Director of Human Resources, we will determine who will serve as investigators for the specific complaint. And so what we will do is we'll make a very diverse team. It will be racially diverse, gender diverse. We'll try to be diverse in how we space out the levels. So if it's like a high school issue, we'll be very careful not to have high school people involved so that it's very unbiased. And so after we assign the investigators to the case, the investigators do a very thorough investigation and I kind of guide them on how to do that. I'm also eligible to be an investigator if necessary. And then after the report is all typed up and ready to go, they give that to Todd Taylor and Todd is our decision-maker. And he decides whether or not sexual harassment has actually occurred and kind of what we need to do about it. And so we'll have conversations about how we're going to resolve this issue and per our board policy, which I'll get into in a little bit in a minute, there are really strong consequences, as there should be. If somebody wants to appeal that decision, one way or the other, we have a peeled decision-maker who is Kim Norton, Assistant Superintendent Kim Norton. And so moving on to the second page, which you received, it actually talks about the board policies here. So again, these are all new part of our regulations. So Board Policy 2265, which the pro, it is a new updated policy that prohibits sexual harassment defined under Title IX. Prohibits any retaliation against somebody in good faith who's made a report or complaint. We talk about how we're implementing regulations concerning everyone in the district's education programs and activities. So this is something, it's kind of a blanket statement that we're protecting everyone. People that are applying for jobs, students, parents and guardians, employees, and third parties. So a third party would be, we partner with Bushu for our background checks. That would be considered a third party. We partner with ESS for cleaning. That would be considered a third party. And so down at the Board Policy 2265 for enforcement, district employees. district employees found to be engaged in sexual harassment will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including discharge. Students to be found involved in Title IX sexual harassment will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including suspension and expulsion, um, depending on how severe. And Title IX sexual harassment by third parties, I gave you some examples of those, but that can also include parents or visitors to a building. Will be addressed in accordance with the authority of the board in the context of the relationship with the third party. And so that there are some administrative, um, administrative procedures outlined here. So you can find those in the board policy as well. And then I gave you kind of the outline, kind of our little roadmap. If you want to see the training that we went through on September 25th, there was a training that Kim, Todd and I had to take for being in our role. And then there was another training that, um, administrators, counselors and social workers participated in, um, in the second part, but both of those trainings are on the website underneath human resources. Each of the slides, um, like are maybe about 60 or so slides. And so I wanted to just do about a two-page summary. I think I went maybe past my time, but that's kind of what I, I talked too much. So that's what we got for Title IX, a very important topic that we're taking very seriously.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what kind of training, what, what, do our, do our teachers and staff and so forth go through a Title IX training? And does, is that like an online training that they go through? Um, second question would be, is there anything that we do in regards to this, uh, as it pertains to our students? I noticed that there's a piece in our policy of enforcement for students, but, um, I wonder if our students, if it's just something that's in a handbook that they read and know, or what kind of information we relay to them in advance about sexual harassment? And then the last question is, um, what would happen if, and you know, God forbid, but if this were a situation at the admin level? Um, I noticed that you guys have kind of the chain of you being investigator and then Todd, the decision maker, and then Kim, the appeal person. But what if this happened, not necessarily with one of you, but at, in, in the district office, in the admin office there? Um, would there be a different process with different people handling it or?
Mm-hmm. Those are great questions. So I meant to say in the presentation that all staff are trained as well on Title IX. Um, we do that through our safe schools mandated trainings. And so they have had the most recent training on Title IX. They also have training on sexual harassment, um, via our LGBTQ plus, um, student community. I, with kids, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different. And so of course it's in our, in our handbooks, but I know that each administrator might handle that a little differently, right? And so we might have some administrators that really explain that and some that don't necessarily do that. In our SEL, um, second step training, I know that it also talks about sexual harassment and what's, uh, a wanted, um, relate like a wanted touch and an unwanted touch and a friendly relationship and what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. And so that is talked about in that, um, depending on the age, um, it may or may not be discussed as sexual harassment. I don't know what, I know in middle school, um, it is discussed as sexual harassment. But I don't know where that cutoff is on when they say it's sexual harassment. I don't know if it happens in fourth or fifth grade or not. My guess is no, because I have a fourth grader and she would ask me what that would mean. And she hasn't said anything yet, but I know from being a middle school principal, I know that in the second step that it is talked about at the sixth grade level. As for administrators, uh, Dr. Avery Tatum is purposely left off of this because if something else happens where we need to bring her in, we need to have her completely out of this investigation in case she needs to be brought in. And so if something were to happen where Todd, Kim, or I, or some administrator was involved, we would, we would have to involve Dr. Avery Tatum in the board or a combination of some other people. To, I mean, if, if Dr. Avery Tatum was the subject of sexual harassment, the board would be involved in some other district administrators. That's what we would have to do. And so we do have, um, you know, this hotline that's also in our mandated training that if you suspect, um, fraud, if you suspect any sort of abuse of power, um, you know, so like if with me, if people suspected that I was doing something wrong, since I'm the Title IX coordinator, they can't really complain to me. But on that, um, on that, uh, fraud hotline or the abusive power hotline, somebody could make an anonymous tip that I wouldn't be able to see because that's monitored by a third party. And it would go to Tori and it would go to Carol and they could see that there was a complaint coming against me. And you guys would be able to have a, a private secret investigation without me knowing if I was the subject of the complaint. But those are really good.
I was gonna add. Yeah, and Tori, I'll add up, uh, to what Angie already shared for the student piece. So, um, Angie's absolutely right. In part of our, our SEL curriculum, we have a, I, um, component, um, related to Aaron's law. Um, and that is where we do talk to the students, um, all the way down to kindergarten, actually, about inappropriate touches, unwanted touches, um, and they do it in a very age-appropriate way at the elementary level. Um, and in your packet, Tori, there are three students, uh, related, um, policies, seven two, seven, um, 20 harassment of students, seven 180, which is our bullying and intimidation harassment policy. We've had that for many, many years. But there's language being added, um, related to sexual harassment. So right now, um, Kim has been the person when any, anytime we have to investigate. And again, it is, it is part of our handbook and it is something that we, we review with the students. Um, and so every incident of bullying, intimidation, harassment, uh, whether it is, uh, based on gender identity, race, sexual harassment has been added to that category. Um, Kim has been the person that those have gone to in the past and that role has, um, kind of investigated those, um, allegations. But now that Angie has been identified as the, um, Title IX coordinator and the non-discrimination coordinator, she will work with Kim. Um, anytime one of our, um, administrators has to investigate a, um, allegation of bullying, intimidation, um, harassment and, and sexual harassment will be included in that. And we take, we are obligated to take every single, um, uh, accusation of that very seriously. And there is a full investigation. And then seven one eight five, Tori, is the, uh, teen dating violence, um, policy and sexual harassment is a piece of that. So. So I killed two birds with one stone. Now I don't have to do those three because we just talked about them. So, so basically those three just, uh, added in, um, sexual harassment as another area of protection, um, it within those three student behavior policies. Other questions for Angie? And then I'm going to walk through a couple of these other ones just really quickly.
I just had a quick one, um, because you mentioned Bushu. That's the, the third party company that we contracted with a couple of years. Was it been two years now, three years? How long has it been since we've worked with them?
Uh, for fingerprinting or you?
Oh, no, no, that's fingerprint. I'm sorry. The third party reporting that we have for any kind of complaint.
Integra.
Integra, thank you. And that, we've been working with them for a couple of years and they're, do they, I had a, this kind of relates, uh, if they receive a complaint and then they refer it back to us, do they follow up yet again to make sure that it's been dealt with? I mean, I, Lord forbid that it would ever happen that somebody who was receiving the complaint didn't want to pass it on. But do we have safeguards in place to make sure that nothing gets ignored or forgotten about? Using that service.
To this, but I, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's anything in place to, it goes to like three of us though. So the reports don't just go to one person. It's set up to go to three people so that we're all kind of watching. So it doesn't, it doesn't fall through the cracks. But I don't believe Integra has a way of, of following up. I mean, they, they probably could, but I don't know that that's part of, part of what they do. They just report out and then they will do quarterly reports.
Yeah, it goes to me and Peggy as well, I think.
And there's quarterly reports too. I mean, there, there's individual reports and then every quarter they will send out things as well. So.
Thank you. That, that really answers my question.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. I'm going to walk through these super, super fast. So most of the, uh, press 105 that you have in front of you is basically just, um, just documenting and adding in sexual harassment in, into all of the current policies that we already have. So Angie's already gone through, um, the new policy, which is 2265. Um, our universe, uh, uniform grievance procedure, 2260, um, now includes, um, Angie and the, um, and Todd and Kim designated into their new roles and what that process will look like. Um, 510, the equal opportunity and minority recruitment, um, policy also now will memorialize that it includes sexual harassment. Um, 520 also, uh, workplace harassment prohibited, uh, will also include language about our process and, um, who the coordinator is and who you make those reports to. Um, 5100 staff development is actually mandating basically what Tori just asked us is do, are we, uh, are we training our staff and our administrators? So, um, that is represented in the staff development, 5100, that we are obligated to train our staff. Um, we do that through the safe schools, which is an online module. Um, moving away from sexual harassment here for a second, 5330 is sick days, vacations, holidays. And this was, um, added into press 105 to, um, memorialize election day as a, uh, paid holiday. Um, we are going to say no to this policy at this time because, um, as, as we've shared with the board already, election day, with this was just a one-time thing that we have, we were not having school on election day. Uh, so we don't want to make it, you know, part of our policy moving forward for the future. As well as the fact that we already designate our, uh, 10 paid holidays in our, uh, our CBA for our ESP staff and, um, e- election day would not, moving forward, not be one of those. So we're going to say no to this policy if, if, unless there are any objections from the board. Um, 710 is the equal education opportunities policy. And again, this just, uh, has us, um, there are two policies here, the student behavior one and, and these last couple where we're actually going to be incorporating not just the Title IX sexual harassment language, but there's also some new language related to gender identity, um, that we are going to say yes to. Um, and that any place where the word gender is used moving forward, um, there's some new sex equity, language that, that was, uh, implemented when March, Kim? Is that correct? It was in March. Um, so we are going to adjust our policies. So an example would be students shall be supported in a manner consistent with their gender. Instead of saying gender, we will now be changing that to say students shall be supported in a manner consistent with their gender identity. This will include but not be limited to, uh, restrooms, locker rooms and facilities that correspond with the student's gender identity instead of gender. Just to give you an example of what that will mean in our language. So that is 710, equal education opportunities. Seven 190, student behavior. We've talked about this one. Um, I think Todd even talked about it our last study session related to isolated, um, timeouts, restraints and, um, timeouts. And this one is just actually having districts memorialize and having the board indicate that they, whether yes, they allow, um, isolated timeouts and restraints, or no, they do not. At this time, uh, we have been allowing the use of isolated timeouts, uh, in, uh, physical restraints based on our guidelines though, which are actually more exhaustive than, um, what the policy requires it to be. And so Todd shared those with you, um, at our October meeting. So you've had a chance to look at those. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Todd?
No, I think this is just, uh, acknowledging the many changes in, uh, in ISB code that, that, uh, govern the use of isolated timeout, timeout and physical restraint.
Very good. And then seven 340 is very minor language changes related to student records. So that is it. Any questions about press 105? So this one is not due until December, so we're not going to be asking you to take action on it tonight. Typically we review the policies and then we take action at the next meeting. I know at our last meeting, we were a little rushed and we had to do it all at one time, but, um, so if you have questions that come up between now and next week, when we meet again, we're here again two weeks in a row. Um, just let us know and we can clarify any, uh, specifically around the sexual harassment things, which is, uh, which is very new. So, uh, you know, if you have specific things you would like Angie to outline or share, we can do that between now and when you, uh, need to vote on these policies next week. Okay.
All right. Um, thank you. Uh, moving on, I guess that's, um, because of our administrative reports and policy reviews. So we'll move on to 10.0 action items. This is, there's just one, uh, which is the voting on the future of winter sports, which we just discussed earlier. So, um, I need a, I put a motion, somebody needs to put a motion on the floor, I believe, to vote on this, correct?
For the administrative recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second. Any last minute questions on this? Nope. Okay. Well then I need a vote. Please roll call, Ruthann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. And next up, we then have our study topics, which is our 2020 Illinois School Report Card. So I'll give it to you, Kim, and you can talk it over.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. So normally we would have. Normally we would have a more extensive report presentation, but due to the pandemic, we don't have the comparable data that we typically do. So I'm just going to walk you through, um, this ISB fact sheet that just explains some of that a little bit further. So when we look at this, um, there's three areas that, the metrics that affect, um, the data due to the suspension of in-person instruction. So first is data that was just, um, completely unavailable due to COVID. And that's our assessment data. So for example, the, we didn't take the IER, um, assessments or.
Much better now.
Sorry, Kim, you were really echoing.
Okay, good. Um, SAT. So we, we didn't have that assessment data. So when you look at, and I'll go through our district report card in just a moment, but that assessment data won't be, be available. Now the climate survey, you'll see that, um, we had great participation from our families, students and teachers. But as a result, because of the pandemic and, um, across the state of Illinois, not all districts were able to complete that. So our schools were able to get individual reports, but because, um, we don't have the district report available from the five essentials due to not all districts being able to complete it. The other impact, um, so, so other data that's was possibly impacted due to COVID was because of, uh, not being again with in-person instruction. So you'd see in some cases, it would make it look like we made a lot of improvement. But that was because of some, um, for example, for our seniors, for graduation rate. Uh, there were adjustments made to the final semester of senior year where some requirements were waived. So things like chronic absenteeism, truancy, the dropout rate, um, freshman on track, graduation rate, everything to do with attendance would be impacted by not being in person. And then finally, an area that, um, would pause caution that it's, it still was reported, but due to the fact that we were not in person, students may not have, um, performed as well academically due to remote. And also, if you remember, we had no harm pertaining to grading. So it just wasn't as comparable as if we were in person. So those areas that would, would exhibit caution and comparing would be eighth graders passing Algebra I, the average days of PE per week, and then CTE, career and technical education enrollment, because we wouldn't be able to. because we wouldn't be able to be onsite, um, for those courses. So if we look at our report card and look at the snapshot, um, you'll see all of the areas to the left here that, that can be reviewed and some are going to be missing. So when you look at academic progress, for example, you aren't going to see the data for our assessments. But if you look over here at the right, you can look at our graduation rate. And you'll see the comparison, um, over the fa- last five years. So according to this, we went from eighty-one to eighty-seven percent, and that's for four years. And you can see our freshman on track. Let me scroll down a bit. And you can see where we were at seventy-six percent. And then we can look at a five-year trend too and see where we are, where we were at over time. So we did see an increase, but again, some things were a bit inflated due to that no harm at the end of the year. So you can see further information, um, with our enrollment um, or low income or student with I E Ps. Student attendance. And so you'll see overall that we were at a ninety-three percent, um, at the end of the year. So again, these are the areas that we can scroll through, um, to see further information. But just wanted to clarify that, um, due to the pandemic, a, a lot of that information is not comparable from one year to the next. Any questions?
So this is Peggy. I just want to clarify.
One other thing that I do want to mention, um, that I, that I failed to mention was the summative designation. So our schools that within power, um, they will, we will continue to have the same summative designations. Um, but the only change is we used to call, um, our schools underperforming. And now there'll be reference to as targeted. So I did want to mention that as well.
Kim, I have a question. Um, I understand that many of the designations on the report card, you know, we have to, can't be used because of the changes with COVID and they're, you know, we can't compare them to previous years. But the graduation rate is an accurate representation. However, that is true to the over the last year?
That is true. I mean, we still can say that seventy-eight percent of our students, um, from that cohort, from freshman year to senior year graduated.
So that wasn't negative, that wasn't impacted by COVID. I mean, the representation.
Correct. It was just the fact that, um, some other requirements were put in place or modified for our seniors.
Thank you.
I have a question and I don't know if you can answer this. How is, have you heard anything about how all of this could affect funding? I mean, our designation staying the same, but what, have you heard any noise from the state about the, the evidence-based funding and what's, how that's being impacted with this and, and COVID?
Yeah, I don't see, and Carol can add on to the evidence-based. As far as grant funding, that stayed the same. And we did actually have some rollover that we wouldn't have typically had. Um, so that's available. But with evidence-based funding, I mean, we're still incurring all the same expenses with salaries and, um, transportation facility costs, everything else.
Yeah. I haven't seen where they've put out anything where EBF is going to be affected by that. Other than the fact that they don't have any money and that they're keeping our, funding the same. Yeah, there's nothing else that I'm hearing.
Any other board members have questions? Okay. Well, thank you. I wish we had better news to give to everybody. Just keep soldiering on. Um, okay. Sorry, I just lost my agenda here. All right. Where's my mute off? Well, it looks like we're at the end, practically at the end of our agenda. We do have, uh, one call for a future special executive meeting after tonight, tonight's meeting was, that's the only one. And, uh, then we'll go on to a superintendent's report.
Okay. Share my screen. Can you see that, Kim? All right, let me. I'm, I miss being in my room and having my double monitors. Things all jumbled. Okay. Very quick, we have a short one tonight. Um, I do want to mention, um, and I'm not going to share too many details about this because our social workers are working very closely with the families at the building level. But I do want to mention, um, this partnership. Um, as you know, we have, we have families every year who, um, Thanksgiving and, um, you know, the, as we enter the holiday season are not always um, able to provide some of the same, um, fixings and, um, those, uh, holiday celebrations as, as some of our families are, um, that have more, um, means and are able to do, um, you know, more um, for those big Thanksgiving dinners. So one thing that we've always done is our social workers at our schools have always wrapped around families to provide some support, uh, during the holiday season. And with Thanksgiving coming up, we're really excited that we're going to be partnering um, with, uh, Stone Creek Church through See You Better Together to be able to, uh, provide, uh, turkeys to a significant number of our families. Um, and we'll be having a, uh, turkey distribution. Again, the social workers are kind of, um, working directly with the families who they know need this the most. Um, so we aren't making these recommendations. These are coming from the building level. Um, and we're working directly with Stone Creek to get the, uh, turkeys here. Um, we'll be distributing them on November, um, nineteenth at Urbana Middle School. I also wanted to mention, um, Prairie Farms is providing a refrigerated truck for us to bring the turkeys here, uh, for the families and Students Senate will be helping volunteer and pass those out. Um, one thing that Stone Creek has done in the past and, and one thing that we've done for families is we provided a meal, um, kind of with all the fixings, you know, with the green beans and potatoes and corn. And, um, we're not doing that this year because of COVID, but what we are doing instead is families will get a fifteen-dollar gift certificate, um, gift card rather, and they'll be able to go to Myers and buy some of those additional items to go with their turkey um, for their Turkey Day, um, for Thanksgiving. So again, I'm not going to go into lots of details because we're, we're dealing with this at the building level. But I just wanted to acknowledge the amazing partnerships that we, um, here are a few of them, um, that we have been involved in, um, especially with Stone Creek Church and See You Better Together since this whole pandemic started. So I just wanted to kind of give them a little shout out. Um, we will be publicizing as we get more, uh, closer to the, uh, November nineteenth date. So, and we'll work individually with the families to make sure that they're there to pick those turkeys up. Next, we had a news gazette, the news gazette teacher of the week last week, Laura Campbell, someone, uh, very near and dear to me. Um, I was her principal for eight years and she is absolutely amazing, um, thirty-two-year kindergarten teacher, um, who works at King School. So she was recognized. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see the article or, or read some of her comments. Um, you know, even as a thirty-two-year-old vet, you can see her, um, her, her setup there and everything that she is doing, adjusting to the times and, and staying as current as she can be with her kids. So we just wanted to say thanks to Laura Campbell and, um, hers, the story is on our website. If you have not had an opportunity to look at that. And then I'm going to keep going with the teacher spotlights here. So since our last board meeting, we've spotlighted two of our other teachers. Um, uh, Stephanie, uh, Thulin from Urbana Middle School is a seventh grade language arts teacher. And then Lena Sacco is a fifth grade dual-language teacher at Leo. Um, and so we shared a little bit of a story and some, uh, tidbits about the wonderful things that they're doing with their students during remote learning. So if you've not had an opportunity to see those stories, please go on to our website. We would love to spotlight more teachers and more students. Um, we have a venue, a way for you to do that. Um, so there, the link is online. So we encourage parents and anyone watching, um, to share and, and nominate those teachers so we can come out and see the amazing things that they're doing in the classroom every day or from, uh, from their Zooms or remotely. I also wanted to recognize, we did this via email about a week or two ago, but since the last meeting, we are really encouraging, um, we're very proud of the fact that we have so many of our staff that are working toward National Board Certification. So I'm not going to read all their names, but I wanted to put it on the screen today just because, um, you know, as you know, as a board, we have been honoring and recognizing our teachers who go through the three-year rigorous process to become National Board Certified. And so I wanted to just put their names out and encourage them. Some of them are toward the end of their three-year cycle. Some have, uh, just started and they're all part of the Urbana cohort. So we're just really proud of the fact that, um, these teachers are, are moving toward that master teacher designation and National Board Certification. And we just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their hard work and encourage them to keep going. So, um, if you see one of these teachers or you know one of them personally, give them a shout out and, and just encourage them with everything else going on with, um, the pandemic and remote learning and all the other, uh, ups and downs. Um, we are just really excited that this many people have stuck with the process through, through all of this and continue on the road toward National Board Certification. And that is it for me.
Thank you for that. Lots to celebrate with the district. Um, I know it's really, really hard to get board certification from the teachers who we've had in front of us before. I do not know how they found enough hours in the day to do this with all the remote learning. So congratulations to them. Do we have any board reports for tonight?
I have one. I just want to thank Jennifer for, um, conducting an adult seminar at, uh, uh, my church last, uh, Sunday, uh, explaining, uh, what the district, uh, faced, faces, continues to face in terms of distance learning, of remote learning versus in-person learning and all the challenges that that brings forward. So thank you.
No problem. I was happy to do it, John. Thanks.
I wanted to, um, ask if there was any questions or anything. I was at a meeting, uh, this past week, uh, getting ready for the delegate assembly. All of that will be online. And the conference that we normally attend in Chicago is going to be online and that's going to be this Saturday. I'm sorry, it's going to be the twentieth, the online conference, the delegate assembly is this Saturday. Um, so I'm going to open that up. Um, has anybody had a chance to look at the, um, what the, uh, what they're recommending? Are there any questions or anything or anything different that you would like to see?
Well, thanks for doing that, Brenda. I, for one, it looks like a much smaller list than in years past we've had to go through, thankfully. Um, and I thought that one was interesting was about the school report card, which was kind of timely given, um, Kim's discussion tonight about the, um, there was one, uh, submission that asked that they have all of the information submitted by June first. And I think that the, um, ISB recommends we don't adopt it. And I think even without COVID, that would be an extreme stretch to get all that information together for schools to report. But I, I don't know if you, have you heard anything from other delegates about what kind of hot topics there, they want to discuss?
Uh, yes, there was some information about one of the topics. Um, it was about licensure for reading. Um, we were in our online Zoom for probably about two to two and a half hours um, with discussion over just these few items. And, um, they're saying do not adopt. And part of the reason why that is, is because right now there is a teacher shortage. And a lot of districts, they're not able to afford with all the cuts and everything, they're not able to afford to either pay or have their teachers take, you know, the non-certified staff go and take the classes for the readings. So that was one of the huge things. They do recognize that it's a, it's a huge problem, but, um, they're recommending right now, do not adopt.
Brenda, you, can I ask you a question? Since you mentioned the teacher shortage one, have, and, and the, uh, board is recommending to adopt that. I know ISB, uh, so have you heard anything about whether or not you think that will, um, we're really watching that one?
Yeah, I think that will, um, be supported and pass the, um, the reading one. Um, the pre-K teacher licensure, I should say, is, is broken down about the, uh, reading and teaching children how to read. And currently, right now, we have a lot of, um, certified staff that are not willing to go back into the schools right now to teach. Uh, that's a little bit separate. You know, the teacher shortage, they are adopt, you know, they are saying to adapt that. Another one of the hot issues that came up was, um, e-learning on election day. And they said that they think that that should continue because all the school, well, not all the schools, but many of the schools said their concerns were when the children are there in present, they have to have more staff on hand to keep the, um, people coming in to vote away from the classrooms and things like that. So they're saying that they, they believe that e-learning should take place if the school has a polling place.
Face that a long time ago and we decided to no longer offer our school buildings for polling places because of that particular issue. And I'm surprised that there are schools in other parts of the state that are still permitting, um, their schools to be considered as polling places. Not because of this past year and because of all the issues of COVID, but, um, because of the, um, concerns of, uh, controlling, properly controlling the types of adults that enter the buildings.
Right. Um, one of the gentlemen in the meeting had said that they were actually under a contract with the city or the township and that there was no other place to have a polling place in that town. So they had to use the school. And that particular incident. Another one of the, um, big, big topics, which there was a lot of discussion on, was, uh, new resolution number two, which was about gun storage. And that was a very, um, involved discussion. The let me find it. I'm sorry. Basically, they felt like, some people felt like that this was, um, a need. But then a lot of people said the I A S B should not get involved with that because that's more of an issue for our legislation at the Capitol to deal with rather than the school board. And, um, the I A S B would spend a lot of money with that. Um, what it says, I'll just read a couple of little quotes from here, if that's okay for a second. Um, the, the resolution committee rationale is, um, the I A S B position statements deal directly with issues that happen inside of a school district. This proposal would be a departure from that practice and the committee questioned whether association resources should be spent on a non-educational issue. While the committee considered the arguments of the submitting district on the potential impact on students, the majority of members felt that this was not an issue for I A S B's involvement. And so they're recommending do not adopt. But they are going to be bringing this, um, proposal to the delegate assembly and still, um, stating their facts for it and we'll, we'll just see what happens. Uh, basically, it talks about how if there's a gun in someone's house, uh, it should be stored. Basically, it talks about how if there's a gun in someone's house, it should be stored properly in a gun safe. But it's hard for a school district to actually go in and mandate that everybody needs to have a gun safe. And they felt like that was a matter for the legislation. So. There was an equity statement, which I believe is very important to all districts right now. I had actually talked to Ann about this earlier, that there are some classes that different boards can do online to get more up-to-date. Let me find it here, I'm sorry.
Was it, it was number twelve, wasn't it, under new belief statements, Brenda?
Thank you, yes.
On page fourteen?
Fourteen, thanks, Ann. Basically, the resolution committee rationale behind this is it would add a new belief statement. Currently, the ISB does not have a belief statement that mentions diversity, equity, or inclusiveness. With the importance and timeliness of the ideas of equity and inclusion, it is appropriate that member districts are asking for ISB to be a source of direction. The committee supported the concept that the Illinois Association of School Boards need to be an equity and inclusiveness leader in the area of education for the state of Illinois. So we are adding that. Everybody is recommending that be adopted. There was no discussion on that, except definitely keep going forward with that. So, but if you read over this and have any other questions, don't hesitate to give me a call, board members. And I'll be happy to talk to you a little bit more or find out the information that you need. Thank you.
Quick question, Brenda, before you sign off on that one. Did, is this a, I think I remember asking this a while back, and I can't remember what somebody said. Can other people watch the delegate assembly, not just the delegate members themselves? Like, can other board members step in and watch it?
Um, I believe so. I know in the past, they have been able to. It is this Saturday at ten o'clock. I don't have my phone with me to actually read the email that was sent out about it, but you could easily check that out and see.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I didn't know, since it's coming before the actual virtual conference, you know, when times pass and we were physically there, we could just walk over to the delegate assembly while we were taking part. But since this is happening before, I just wanted to know if there's any way we could zip in and zip out again, if possible. So I'll look for, I'll look for information.
Yeah, just check out the website. I'm sorry about that.
Nope, no, no problem at all. Thank you for all that.
Sure, thanks.
Lori and I can do a little digging, too, and if there's a link, we can try to send it to everybody, maybe.
Any other board reports? Oh, sorry, Peggy, we're starting.
Yeah, this is a new just report. It's just a reminder that the, to the listening public, that the terms of four members of the school board, representatives in the sub-districts one, three, five, and seven, will be up for election on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. I will not be seeking reelection as representative of sub-district five at the end of my third term in April. To get on the ballot, interested candidates must collect fifty valid signatures from registered voters in the sub-district they're running in. And those signatures must be filed with the Champaign County Clerk's Office the week of December fourteenth to twenty-first of this year. More information is on the School District Board of Education website. There's a lot of good information that Cameron Williams put up, and thank you to him for doing that. So please spread the word.
Thank you, Peggy. I will not be running again for my seat this year also. I feel like it's time to get some new people on board, and I've been on for several years now, so.
And that's sub-district one, correct, Brenda?
Any other board reports tonight? Okay, well then, I think we just need to have a motion now to adjourn into closed session for tonight's special exec session following this current one. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Nope, nope. Yes, the full statement, thank you. I knew I was forgetting something. I need a motion for us to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. No, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Do we have a roll call, please, Ruth Ann?
Get the mic on. Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Kloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, we are now adjourned to closed session, and I don't know, does anybody need to take a quick break for any reason? Or do you want to just plow on ahead?
I think this will be short, right, Carol? I mean, yeah, I don't know that we need, we don't need a five-minute break. I think we